Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Thank you. It's a call to order, the school committee meeting for Thursday, February 1st, 2024, regular session, and I would like to begin with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First order of business after that is public comment. See, we have a packed house tonight, so this is your opportunities to speak. Please come forward, please, since there are obviously many of you, remember to give your name and address, please.
Thank you. Sasha Weinrich, 21 Sawyer Road. As I am sure many have, did I say that? Sasha Weinrich, 21 Sawyer Road, I did, thank you. As I am sure many have read, the North Andover CPAC sent the school committee an open letter regarding discussion that took place at the school committee on January 18th, as well as in an effort to continue to educate the committee on what a CPAC is and its statutory role and responsibilities. Although we were encouraged by the vocal support of some members of the committee for both our mission and our budget request, we were troubled by the comments and lack of understanding shown by some committee members, including how the law defines a CPAC and of the challenges faced by the disabilities community. While CPAC members were concerned by the rhetoric of some, we are committed to moving forward. CPAC pledges to continue to operate in good faith with the school committee and remain steadfast in our commitment to supporting our community's students with disabilities and their families. We ask that the North Andover School Committee in turn pledge the following so that CPAC can fulfill its statutory obligations. One, agree to work collaboratively and in good faith with CPAC for the common goal of improving the educational outcomes of the approximately 1,400 students identified with disabilities in our district. Two, allow CPAC to present, at a minimum, quarterly to the North Andover School Committee to advise on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, including updates on our mission, goals, and funding needs. Three, support the budget requests made by CPAC to the North Andover School Committee and work in concert with the CPAC over the next year to implement processes on how the CPAC, school committee, and broader school district can work together and interact based on both best practices and what best serves our students with disabilities. We appreciate the committee's support and look forward to working collaboratively as we strive to improve the education and safety of students with disabilities in North Andover. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other public comment? Please.
Haven't spoken publicly in a long time, so bear with me. Good evening. My name is Mary Wertz, and I'm joined tonight with my husband, Joe Silvera. We live at 71 Foxwood Drive, and our daughter is 25 years old, but she benefited when she was in the North Andover school system for all the resources for students with special education needs. I am here tonight to voice my support of CPAC's budget request. CPAC provides an invaluable service to our community and especially to the students with disabilities and their families. These volunteers work tirelessly to support educational opportunities and to advocate for the better education and safety for over 30% of the district's students. Please join me and my husband and my daughter especially, who is a college graduate and is working and doing well, by approving their budget request. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Martin. I live at 56 Candlestick Road, and this evening you'll be taking an important step to improve or to approve the 2024-2025 school year budget. And prior to taking that vote, I ask that you work collaboratively with the district to ensure that the CPAC budget request is included and fully funded. You should fund CPAC not only because it is required, a required advisory committee, but because the programming that they have proposed is focused on providing, oh, sorry, it's been a while, families the support and knowledge they need to better support their students with disabilities, and because it meets your budget directive, which states, "Recommended and Budget for Programs and Initiatives to Improve the Progress of High Need Learners and Ensure Adequate Progress for All Students, Including Special Education Services, Parent Learning, Community Engagement, and Exploration of Some or Another Programming for Students at Academic Risk." Please join me in supporting the CPAC and their budget request.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lauren Stedman, 575 South Bradford Street. As I shared with you all last time, I come to the table as not only an advocate for autism, but also a parent of children on the spectrum. More so, the advocacy part takes over when I think about our conversations that we've had around this table and that I have had with my CPAC, as well as fellow parents. And that is a proverb that sticks out in my head. It's an African proverb that says, "A child who is not embraced by the village will burn it down to feel its warmth." And that is the effect that not supporting children with disabilities and their family will have on this community. It is far extended past just an educational experience. It is their livelihood and potential to thrive, that we put behind them the backing, the understanding, the compassion, that they are not only members of our community who deserve a quality life, but that as a school district, North Andover is one above the rest. So while not many CPACs, mass PACs may be in collaborative efforts with their school districts, we will be the ones to set the tone. We will be the ones to collaborate with Marcy and all of you to make sure that this school district is the one that is above the rest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zora Warren. I'm at 129 Wayland Circle. I am the treasurer of the North Andover CPAC, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself, a parent, an educator, and a member of this North Andover community. The mission of the North Andover Schools, as you know, one part of that mission is we are committed to ensuring that all students are provided an equal opportunity to an excellent education. However, as we presented to you at the January 11th meeting, we are not meeting that goal here in North Andover. If you look at our 2023 MCAS data, we know that for grades three to eight, only 17% of our students with disabilities met or exceeded proficiency. For the 10th grade, that was 27%. So one in five, not even, and one in four. For math, for grades three to eight, it was 19%. It's one in five. Grades 10, 15%. Sciences is pretty much the same. The good news is that we have identified the significant area of opportunity, and we can only fix a problem when we first identify it. The district has many positive assets to make an impact, including devoted teachers, new literacy curriculum, and dedicated families that you see here tonight, and many more. We can all agree that engaged families improve the educational outcomes for all students, but I want to point out that there is a difference between engagement and involvement. As a CPAC, we shared with you on January 11th that families of students with disabilities feel ill-prepared to be equal members of their student's IEP team, meaning that while they are involved, they are not fully engaged. The CPAC Board has proposed specific programming to address this need, including a rights law presentation for families. While the programming of CPAC addresses the need shared by families, it also perfectly aligns with the goals and directives that the district, the superintendent, and the school committee have provided. When we think about the strategic plan, it says equity for all students. When we look at the shared goals for fiscal year '24 of the superintendent and school committee, it says the district will support a district-wide commitment to social justice and equity for all students. There is no greater social justice issue than providing our students an excellent education that meets the standards of the state of Massachusetts. And finally, the school committee directives. As you can see, by funding CPAC, you are funding an actionable plan that meets the goals and directives that you all have set for our schools and our community. But most importantly, I want you to ask yourself, what is best for kids? It's why you're here. It's why I'm here. It's why we're all here. So please join me and do what is right for kids by providing the full support, by providing your full support of CPAC and its budget request, and begin to change the educational outcomes for over 1,400 students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan O'Neil, 65 Russell Street. Good evening. I stand before, well, I sit before you today as a member of CPAC, but also as a mother of a child with special needs. Our children are not just entries on this budget line. They are young individuals with dreams, challenges, and the right to an education that meets their unique needs. Recently, our request for funds, mostly to conduct a workshop to aid parents in understanding the IEP process, was met with comparisons to requests for new gym floors and sports team funding. This comparison is not only unfair, but it's deeply hurtful. It undermines the critical importance of equipping parents to advocate effectively for their children's education and the unique differences between other organizations and the role that CPAC plays. Furthermore, the insinuation that we, as a dedicated group of parents and advocates, lack the ability to responsibly manage these funds is baseless and offensive. This is not a matter of frivolous spending. It's about empowering families with the knowledge and tools they need to navigate a complex and often daunting special education system. Navigating the IEP process can be incredibly challenging. It requires understanding a labyrinth of laws, rights, and educational jargon that many find overwhelming. Our proposed programming would support parents and provide workshops aimed at demystifying the process, making it more accessible and equitable for all families, particularly those who feel marginalized or unheard. Equity in education is not about giving every student the same resources, but about allocating resources based on the specific needs of each student, whether they be more or less than others. Our goal tonight is not just about funding. It is a call for a change in perspective and approach from our school committee, a perspective that sees the value in investing in the unique educational needs of all students and families, and an approach that treats such investments with the seriousness and respect it deserves. We ask for your support, not as a concession, but as a recognition of the essential role that we play in shaping an educational environment that is truly inclusive and equitable. Let us work together to ensure that every child in this community has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brianna Stetson, 326 Chestnut Street. Dear members of the North Andover School Committee, my name is Brianna Stetson, and I am a parent to a second grader with multiple disabilities who attends the learning skills program at Sargent Elementary School. I am also a member of our town's finance committee. Tonight, I am coming to you as a private citizen to share my story and why the CPAC and what they want to do for our learners and parents is so important. Being a parent to a child with special needs is an emotional journey that carries an incredible amount of added burden to families. To quote an article I recently read in Well and Good, "Children are not the cause of parents' mental health challenges. Instead, the stress and burnout associated with parenting a child with disabilities comes as a result of navigating a complex and ever-evolving system of care. It's the expensive evaluations, the clinical visits, the endless mountains of paperwork, appointments to schedule and reschedule, phone calls to insurance companies, and more often than you might imagine, legal battles to secure necessary services like medicine, equipment, and education." There's a lot of trauma that goes into parenting kids like ours, but it's not from dealing with our children's challenges. It's from negotiating our child's right to exist in a world that is not set up for them. Navigating your child, disabled child's right to exist in this world is incredibly, incredibly daunting. I, as a care provider and a full-time working mother, am educated and still find this incredibly challenging to navigate, overwhelming, and at times impossible. As I mentioned earlier, my child's in second grade and is disabled. His needs are complex. On top of having an incredibly rare medical condition, he presents with several learning disabilities, ADHD, and a host of other medical conditions that impact his ability to access things that many of us take for granted. I am incredibly fortunate and privileged to have outside resources supporting me, including a privately paid advocate, a deep community of experts by way of my professional network and personal connections, and a higher-level education that provides me with additional advantages when navigating the incredibly complex world of special education and disabilities. Despite all these extra resources and privilege that my family and I have had, I still often feel confused, defeated, and powerless in supporting my child in the best way possible while ensuring the highest potential for his future success. And despite having this deep network of resources, I still often feel alone and isolated in this journey, often questioning if I am asking the school the right questions, doing everything I can to support my child's education across both home and school, and truly understanding what my role can and should be when it comes to my son's education. Now, imagine you are a parent from an underserviced community without the same financial and privileged positions that my family comes from. When I think about my parental experience over the past eight years, I think about all the incredible educators and administrators who have played an integral part in shaping our success as a family with a disabled student. I think about the time that my student was able to participate in kindergarten graduation at the ABBCC. He was very proud. I was too. Or his first self-portrait that his OT at the time, Ms. Andrea, shared with me. But I also think about all the sleepless nights, tears, mostly from mom, fear, confusion, and worry that have accompanied our journey. Our North Andover CPAC in particular has been an incredible resource to my family and my husband over the past two years as we have navigated some new challenges and new diagnoses for our student. From pointing out additional resources to explaining my rights as a parent in the special education process in a way that feels approachable and easy to understand, to creating the space for parents like myself to just be, a space to be able to not worry about saying the right thing, have all the answers, and give us permission to be vulnerable and accepted for the many emotions that accompany navigating the world of special education. This is not something you can ever put a dollar amount behind. Best of all, the programs and resources that CPAC provides are free and allows for all parents, regardless of the child's disability, educational setting, culture, financial status, or background, to be able to get the tools and resources they need for getting a more equitable and thoughtful education for their child. There are a ton of literature and resources that supports and validates the important roles parents and caregivers play in a child's IEP team and in the child's educational success. As parents, we understand that learning and development doesn't exist in a vacuum, and it truly takes coordinated effort across both home and the school to be able to support a child's full spectrum of educational needs. This also means that we have an incredibly big obligation and duty to our parents of the most vulnerable learners to provide a free and equitable resource for training, education, support, and allyship. What the CPAC is looking to do this year is invaluable when we think about all of our learners and what the impact of our children's education will have on growing this community of North Andover. We have 1,400 children with disabilities in this district and 1,400-plus caregivers that have a right to a free and equitable support for their child. I am urging the school committee to use school committee funds to support CPAC and furthermore, work in concert with the CPAC in building out a continuous and robust partnership towards improving the educational outcomes for all students. When I became a mother to a medically complex disabled child, I felt lost. I lost a lot of friendships, struggled financially to keep up with the mountain of medical bills that seemed to accumulate overnight, and barely had the energy to get out of the bed some days, never mind navigate a complex and evolving world of special education. The CPAC has been invaluable for me, helping me to understand my rights, how to best advocate for my son, how to work collaboratively with educators and administrators, and perhaps most importantly, has shown me that I am not alone, that there are others who truly understand what I am going through and accept my child and I in all of our different forms. The support I have gotten has been invaluable, and I can confidently tell you that I would not be the parent, the working professional, or advocate like I am today without the help of resources like the CPAC. If the CPAC is able to do that for me today, imagine what they could do with the programs they have planned and the additional funding with support that they need for funding to raise awareness for CPAC. Its funding is going to help shape the backbone of our students, of its community, and more importantly, our leaders of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Karina Paterelli, and I'm living at 5 Scaputerris. I am here tonight to voice my support of the incredible work that the CPAC does to support students with disabilities and their families. The CPAC presented a clear and detailed budget request to continue to do this incredible work at the January 11th school committee meeting, in particular, to provide education and programming that will help parents and guardians be better prepared to work with the district to support their students. I ask that you support this request. Having a child with special needs, I feel the CPAC is critical and a valuable resource to the North Andover community. I look forward to seeing what they have in store in the upcoming events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Tenille Travers, 136 Lancaster Road. I don't have anything written, but I'm here to support CPAC and budget approval. Like everyone has said before me, special education is a very overwhelming and difficult area to navigate. I've learned that, and I would have been lost had it not been for the wonderful people of CPAC this year. Sorry. I think their work is invaluable, and I think that the council itself is invaluable, and I'm here to support, as a parent, their budget needs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Nope, okay.
Hi, I'm Jean Willoughby. I live at 224 Raleigh Tavern Lane. So my son graduated from a different, not a different district, but a different school. But I had two children, he came to North Andover for many years, and then I also had two typical children, too, that came to this school. And I'm here to support the line budget for the CPAC to get the training that they need. And the reason why it is so important that they, they're going to use the budget for training for the parents, and the parents, when they come in, have no idea what's happening or how to navigate or do anything. But the training that they're requesting to receive for the $7,000 or whatever it is, is for them to learn the ropes. And it's not just for them to learn the ropes, but it's for, when they sit down to meetings, you don't spend half the meeting trying to explain exactly what's going on. They can come in and actually know what they're doing, have a little structure, and have a little confidence in what they're doing. So it's very important that the parents know as much as possible because they're the ones who are going to call the shots just as much as the school. So if you guys can work together and, you know, have a cohesive relationship, then the child is the one who's going to thrive. And that's all we're asking for, is for the children to thrive. Another perspective is that the, just about every parent in here, I'm guessing has more children in the district than just the one with special ed. So as a parent of a typical child, you go to every event. You support the school in every way you can for your typical children, and then you have a special ed children, and it would be nice if this district would also support them as much as the parents support the school as well. So I'm just asking that you, you know, consider that line item as a very valuable training for these parents. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Come right up.
Hi, my name's Erin Beterlia. I live at 24 Wentworth Ave. I just wrote a little something short. My son has autism. He's been in the North Andover school system since he was three. In our eight years in this school district and involved in the schools, I've never felt as supported as I have in the past year and a half with the CPAC and what these women have done and the amount of time that they've invested to just really, like, reach out to our community and find out what our needs are and find out what's lacking, and then to develop these programs to educate all of us who are special needs parents. It is, as other women and other parents have said before me, it's so daunting, and it's scary, and it's frightening. And they're just trying to set us up for a position of success, to walk into those meetings feeling confident that we're doing everything we can for our children. And that's really all we want to do, is just advocate for our children. You know, they're launching this in-person support group that was so important when my child was younger, to be able to meet with other sped parents and talk about our concerns and bounce ideas off of each other. These things are important. And what they want to do with this money, and I urge you to please approve this, is to just really improve the conditions for this special education community. And thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have recognition. So is he here?
He is.
All right. What's that? Back left, Kyle, come on up. So I want to, well, I'll meet you over there. So I have to speak into the microphone. So this is very happy to let everyone know, to want to congratulate Kyle and recognize his achievement, 100 career wins. 100 wins in any sport is pretty impressive, particularly in wrestling. It's a huge accomplishment. And of note, his freshman year, there were only 13 matches. And so you're 32 and eight this year? Do you do anything besides wrestle?
Cross country, I was in that one, and I was small to play football.
I'm just, I was really kidding. I mean, 32 and eight means you've been wrestling a lot. That's what I meant. Anyway, I am really pleased and proud to present to you this certificate of recognition for winning 100 matches as a member of the Scarlet Knights Wrestling Team. Hang on while I sign it. And congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right.
Smile for your family.
Very good. Congrats again.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Congratulations again.
I know you want to get home from work to do your homework.
Well, after all those wrestling matches, he probably needs some time to do his homework. That's great. Thank you. Okay. We have some consent items next. If someone would like to make a motion regarding the minutes, that would be wonderful.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented in the packet for January 11th, 2024, and January 18th, 2024.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's take a vote on the motion. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Ms. Schrauski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. The minutes are approved, January 11th and January 18th. Next, we have another fun event, the Student Representative Report. And we have a full house tonight. Ben Abbott, Cece, for those who need the full explanation, it's Christiane Choi, right? And Harper Barrios, so take it away.
Good evening, everybody. This week's been quite a week. It started off pretty nice with the school delay on Monday due to the weather. Yeah, it was awesome. A lot of people got to sleep in, got some time for themselves in that morning, you know, get their stuff together. It was awesome. Thank you. We appreciate it. This past weekend, on Sunday, our student council attended the Unified Bocce event for the Special Olympics at North Reading High School. And me and Harper actually went there as fans in the stands, as well as McKenna Dubey and Victoria Rubin, who are on the state board. But it was a terrific event. It was really fun to, we got to help officiate some of the games. We got to meet a bunch of new people, super fun, you know, great energy. They had like a sensory room. Obviously, we got to watch them play bocce. It was, love bocce. like a sensory room, obviously we got to watch them play bocce, it was, love bocce, actually bocce is actually pretty interesting if you actually watch it. And they, you know, it was, North Reading held up a really great event and I feel like it was really awesome to attend. And then, oh, this week, at our school, the new bathroom policy was implemented. So now, all the bathrooms on the wings are closed and only the middle bathrooms on each floor is open. And I feel like it's had a positive, or it's, it's been controversial in opinions, but the basic fact is that like, you know, the vaping issue has definitely gone down because of this, I've seen an improvement in that. And the vandalize, the vandalism in the bathrooms have also gone down, so I think that the policy has done, has accomplished some of what it's tried to, what it was for. And also this week, student council, we held a bake sale, and just to raise funds for the council and hopefully pay off for the bus we have to pay for to go to the MASC State Student Council Conference this March. And so, yeah, Dr. Gilligan, he helps support our cause. And we very much appreciate it.
Did you buy some baked goods, Dr. Gilligan?
Cece and Harper, they were terrific, they were walking out, I saw like 14 cupcakes. What day was this, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And I was starving, I hadn't had lunch, I was like, oh my God, they're like, this is for a good cause, but it's two bucks for a cupcake. So I said, all right. And I didn't have any money on me, no cash anyway. So I wrote them an IOU for $2 and I signed it and they gave me credit in the cupcake. And I said I would pay you tonight, which I did. So, they even threw in and said, you know, you can have a few of the broken cookies.
Did you charge them interest?
We did not.
Oh man, that's very generous of you.
So, awesome. And whoever baked them, I think it was McKenna Dubey that baked those cupcakes, delicious.
Delicious, they were delicious.
You guys do a great job and it was terrific talking to you that afternoon.
Thank you, we appreciate the support.
Harper?
Hello. The NHS has a blood drive on February 17th from 9:00 to 2:00 PM at the Grace Point Church. And the Drama Guild held their cabaret last Friday, which is where many students sung musical theater songs to raise money for our musical in the spring, which is in the first week of March. And it was a lot of fun and it went very well.
Sounds like it. Go ahead, Ben.
Hello, my name is Ben, for those who don't know me. The North Andover High School Scholarship Program was recently posted with $225,000 from local businesses and local organizations available to seniors who apply. It's a great program, it all kind of culminates on a night in the spring around graduation. And I believe almost every senior that applies is guaranteed a scholarship, so it's great. There's a science team meet at North Andover High School on the 13th of February. There's also a math meet on Thursday hosted by North Andover High School as well. Sports, winter sports are cruising, boys' basketball is doing extremely well. Senior Zakulinski recently hit 1,000 career points the other week. Girls' basketball, indoor track, wrestling, winter cheer, and boys' and girls' hockey are also doing equally as well. Recently, we had some issues with the fire alarms at the high school, especially in the fall, but those have since been resolved. I believe there's work being done and kind of a lot of students would start to get annoyed, especially the teachers, would get annoyed by the disturbances that they were causing throughout the day, these would go off. But having that cleared up has kind of, has let students have some confidence in the fire alarm system again, because I know a lot of students wouldn't leave the building when the fire alarms went off, but now that it's figured out, it's gotten much better. So, that's all that we have for tonight, thank you guys.
All right. Questions or comments from the committee for the students?
What's the musical this spring?
The musical this spring is Bee, Bee and the Beast.
Thank you.
Nice. Any others? Yep, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
As always, welcome to stay, also, okay to go home, get your homework done. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Next we have superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report will be briefed tonight. I want to start with a new translation tool that we have here in the district. It's really remarkable. I'm going to ask, School Committee Member Joe Hicks will be my assistant this evening. He's been really excited about this.
This is not planned. If he planned it, I didn't plan this.
All right. All right, Joe. Well, it's on, we're going to put it on. Here we go, all right. So, we have, we have a flyer. What this machine can do, and it's really terrific, is I can take something in English, any flyer, any written document, I can run it through here to make a copy and put it into any language I want. And so, we translate all the time, our two biggest languages in North Andover, we have over 41 languages in our school district, our two biggest are Spanish and Portuguese, Brazilian, Brazilian Portuguese, excuse me. So, this is really cool though, because this is a really easy way to do it, I'm going to take us through it, and then I'm going to have Ms. Lathrop show us how it also works from our computers on the software. So, Mr. Hicks, you put that in.
I put that in. Face, face up.
Hold on. Face up, but don't hit anything yet.
Be an easy translation.
And then I'll walk it around and it'll be like a Vanda White.
While he's getting it set up, I'll tell you, it also can translate the other way. So if somebody brings us a document in a language, we can translate it to English.
So when I get a transcript to register a student, you know, this is really easy. Now, Ms. Lathrop?
Yes, sir.
I might need your assistance.
Put the block this we can review.
Yes. How do we get to, how do we get to the regular PIN pad? Thank you. I've put in Ms. Lathrop's secret code. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lathrop, now we got logged in, I'm going to hit accept. All right. So, Joe, I'm going to let you pick the language tonight. Next.
I can pick any of them?
Oh, I have to deselect Spanish, correct?
Sure.
You can pick anything you want.
Someone give me a language.
Swahili.
Well, Spanish is on the first one, I don't, Swahili, Swahili is here.
Of course, it will be hard unless someone in the room can help to determine if it really is accurate. Can you convert it for us, that would be good.
Now, this might seem like it's a little long, but...
Compared to where it costs to pay a translator to do this.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, Mr. Hicks, if you could show the camera what we, what we had in English, straight ahead that way.
Oh, that one over there?
Camera three.
It's translating right now.
It's in the cloud. This might not be as exciting as Mr. Hicks and I think it is. For you at home...
This is really exciting for you all.
As someone who's done a lot of translating of documents all the time, this is really exciting.
It's downloading and translating a document.
Just to add.
Here it comes.
Just to add, so this was, we practiced, this was Pam went to see...
Swahili.
To practice this.
I'm Mr. Hicks, camera three.
I'm actually, I'm actually going to go too. Camera three? We don't, I mean, I don't know if Swahili is accurate, but we're going to go with yes. So cool.
I'll tell you.
Okay. Yeah, there's some examples coming.
There's some examples, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the examples, I was trying to determine, I speak a little bit of German, but I don't think that's what this is.
It's Polish, I did a Polish one earlier. Anyway, folks, Joe, thank you for your help. It's a terrific, it's terrific in terms of much more ease in the job we do to provide access to families, and so...
That's the point of it, like where, where the turnover time for translated documents is days and weeks sometimes, to minutes for families, so Pam went to seem collaborative for the initial trial of this, like, device that I feel like they could have told us was $500,000 and I'd be like, okay, sounds like, that sounds reasonable compared to what we pay for translations for a district that has...
41 plus languages.
Plus languages, so, they practiced on IEPs, so that was the document they practiced on, so it's unusual that translation, you know, online cloud options will translate more complicated language, but this does, so, again, turnaround time for families for flyers and brochures and, you know, stuff you guys, everything, so it's pretty cool.
Yep. So, Mr. Hicks, appreciate the help. Ms. Lathrop, do you want to talk a little bit just about the software package?
I will. So, the other thing is that this prints in black and white, but you can download it, there was an option if you didn't hit print, you could have hit download it and then it would have printed in color because the original copy was color. So also come, also what we receive as part of the package is we have a software and we have logins. So, administrators have logins, our ESL teachers have logins, some special education teachers have logins, because it does cost us every time we print one of these. So, not all classroom teachers have them, but they know where they can go. Are you going to stop, will you stop sharing for a second? Okay, so this is my login, so I sort of, oopsies, was there a second ago. Oh. Don't do that to me. There we go. So this is my login, and then all I do is I choose a file, so I'm just going to show you, I'm going to choose this file, which is a family letter, oh, this one's in Spanish, so don't look at that. So we choose a file, so I just go to wherever I am. I'm going to choose that file, and then it will automatically detect the language for us. Now, the difference with the software and the cloud is I could choose five languages here. So if I wanted to print this in five different languages, I could choose those five languages, I'm just going to choose one because it will go much quicker. But you can see, we have a plethora of, it tells me I've selected one language and then I can download it, so I translate the file. You have two options when it translates the file, it can go to your email or you can download it. And what's beautiful about this is so if a principal ESL teacher, you know, multi-language teacher has this software on their computer, once they download it or send it to their email, they can print it from the printer in their school. They don't, you don't need this printer to print it, you just need this printer if you have a hard document that you want to change. So this will print on any printer in any school. So now my files are ready, goes up here, choose my file, and that's just the letter, same letter.
You started in Spanish and went to Portuguese?
Oh, okay. Did I start in Spanish? I think I changed it to the English one before I went in there. And then, what we're trying to learn now is that some documents do better with this software and some documents do better with the machine. And so you pay for the machine and then you pay for a certain amount of copies. So we originally started with 10,000 copies, and then as that wears down, we can add more money to have more copies.
Yeah, so appreciate it, Ms. Lathrop. It does go a little quicker than probably Mr. Hicks and I, you know, there's probably people a little more adept at it, but honestly, to be able to get a document that's accurate in, you know, in a couple minutes, it makes a difference as, you know, as administrators of the district, it makes a difference for our principals, it makes a difference for our teachers, the ability to do that. So, I thought we'd share it, it's really cool. I may have moved this up here for today, we're going to have to move it back for tomorrow.
Dr. Gilligan, where does it normally reside? Where does the machine reside?
It resides over in the Special Education Office area, right by Marcy's office, so it's right over there. All right. Next up, mock trial. Mock trial was on this week, launched District Court, they took on Bishop Gerton, they beat him. I did not get to go. I didn't get to stay for the whole trial because I was meeting, I had a meeting with the School Committee Chair at 2:00 that day, it started at 1:30. But Ms. Lathrop and I did zip over to the Fenton Judicial Courthouse, I ran up the three flights of stairs, busted into courtroom four, spoke with the judge, wished all of our kids good luck, and we won. So, I took a few pictures while I was there when they were just getting started. It is one of my favorite things. Mr. Oberlander is the advisor, who's the teacher, Kim Cooperstein, she's a parent who's a practicing attorney, she is the other kind of advisor. And then as you see here, these are some of our folks that are, like, in the wings, like, they might be the backups and they're watching or they have a role later. I see Mr. Jackson back there, and then, you know, this isn't, that's, this is Mr. Oberlander, they're getting ready for their trial. So they get a case and they, you know, and when they get it, they have to study both sides, they don't know what side they're going to get, and then they have to be able to argue that side. And again, I probably repeat myself, my wife says I can sometimes, but when we were in Lowell District Court with the mock trial team last year, a lawyer walked in, a real attorney, and he thought court was going on for real, you know, with our kids. So they're really good. We have one coming up in Salem, Massachusetts, Salem District Court, and, you know, the flyer's been attached to the agenda in the past, but that's mock trial, really great job. Check out the nightly newsletter if you haven't, it has, especially all the budget information is in my section with a lot of links, a lot of information and highlights for that. And last but not least, the Equity Process, the group that's doing the townwide equity review for, in schools. They came the other day with their teams and they, they had a chance to visit all of our schools. And so they were in classrooms, you know, next they'll be connecting, I think, with School Committee Members at some point, and then they'll be doing more with the general public, parents, kids, et cetera. So, really impressed with them, top-notch group, the Equity Process. And that wraps up the superintendent's report.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Chair's report. I'm going to begin with just a report, I personally attended the Roblox Tournament a week or so ago. It's fantastic, I've never been to one despite being an engineer for many years, I just never got into that aspect of it, I was really impressed. We had a triple crown winner, our Team A, and three, three of our, we had six teams competing in this, and the three of our teams qualified for the regionals, which are coming up February 26th and 27th. It was solid, it was well-run, and most remarkably from my perspective, was how well-attended it was. Not just the students participating, but it was like, kind of like going to a basketball game, I mean, there were, there were fans in the stands, and, and more than just parents, students too, that really was, kind of made me take notice that it wasn't just, you know, mom and dad out there, there were, there were friends, which I was, really impressive. The second thing I want to make everyone aware of, the Historical Society is putting together a very, very strong program for Black History Month. There's, it's linked to our agenda, but there's a whole set of events that begin tomorrow with a concert, a number of choir groups in the area that's going to take place at the North Parish Church. Then there's events the following Friday, the following Sunday, I don't need to read this to everybody, but there's a really, really good, solid program that I would urge people to take advantage of and, and learn a little bit more about that culture, so important to us here in the United States. And then the third thing, I'm very, very pleased to hear this, that all, I believe all of us and our predecessors and our select board members and so forth have been helping with our civic learning program in eighth grade. And Mr. McGravy, who leads that for us in his class, they've been invited by, by the legislature to come and present at the State House during civil, civic, sorry, Civic Learning Week in front of this, in front of the whole state legislature and the governor. It's a huge honor, date is in March, it's not precise yet, but we'll be publicizing that, but it's a really gigantic honor, it really recognizes the students that Mr. McGravy has been able to accomplish since 2019 with that new program. Back to the agenda. So that concludes the chair's report, unless there's any comments or additions. Okay, now we have school building committee updates, we'll start with NAMs and Mr. Hicks.
Thank you. We had a meeting this past week, we had to do a couple of change orders that I'd like to share with, with the committee. One, they had to make a change to the... Um, one, they had to make a change to the, a slight change to the structural steel, uh, support system where the new building is meeting the old building to specifically support the brick veneer. So we had to approve a change order to move, move that up a little bit. Um, easily done, um, but that, that's happening. Um, we also approved a change order to improve the drainage from the construction site down to Main Street. Um, back in September, we had approved a change order to do that design and now we had to approve the money to, um, actually, uh, do the, uh, implement the design. Um, it's about $130,000. Um, we have plenty of space in our contingency fund to, to do that. We also have, um, some, we're saving some money and there's some extra funds in the testing and fees, um, lines. So we are confident that that's not going to, um, have a huge impact on the overall budget. And then lastly, this one is not costing any money, um, but they updated us that in the new wing, um, there was a special education space that had a bathroom and a small, and a office. They're moving the walls so that the bathroom will be larger so that include an adult changing table and the office is going to be designated as a multisensory, um, room. I think it was multisensory. Is that the right word? I think so. Um, which is fantastic so that we can make sure that our, uh, students that need those facilities, um, are equipped with them. And then in general, in the construction process, we are on time still. Um, weather hasn't slowed them down. The tie-ins of the steel is, are going well. They're about to start putting the decking, they've completed the decking for the second floor. They're going to put the decking on for the roof and then they'll start to wrap the building and dry it in so they can start putting heat in there so they can start doing the next phase of construction.
Yeah, that picture's probably not even a week old and it's already out of date, right?
Yes. Yeah. But things are progressing nicely. And the work that, for the drainage is not going to impact schedule at all. It's going to happen in the summer. Um, and because it's site work, they have, the contractor has crew available to do that. So it won't change the calendar of events at all, which is great.
It's awesome. Every day I drive by there and I see more stuff happening. It's really, it's exhilarating. Any questions for Mr. Hicks? Okay. Mr. McDevitt, how about the Kittredge progress?
Uh, sure. Relatively quick right now. Um, yesterday, the submissions were due for design and, um, three came in. Um, always kind of good to get a couple of different options. Um, two actually, I think, looked pretty similar. One had a little bit of a different design. Uh, but the committee meets on, I think it's the 14th to, to kind of review those. And then there, there's a subcommittee that will review the design. I think they're meeting on the 14th. Um, and then the larger committee meets on the afternoon of the 15th, um, to kind of do that as well. Anything else?
No, no. One of them is, uh, the same firm that has done the middle school for us, uh, MVG.
Yep.
So we know them, uh, but it is good to have three. And traditionally, you narrow it down to three for interviews anyway. So that just means we'll probably be interviewing these three and then selecting from one of those.
Yeah. All very creative. It was kind of cool.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, that concludes school building committee updates. Now we're on to old business, two parts. We have a final read and vote on the budget and a second read and vote on the calendars. So, um, regarding the budget, I'd like to share some information with the committee that I've done some research.
Um, Mr. Chair, do we have to first move that we discuss the budget and then we can share that as part of the discussion?
Sure. I guess that's true. Yes.
So I was going to move to, uh, present, uh, to approve the budget as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, so now we're in discussion.
We can discuss it.
We, we have to, you're moving the budget so we can now discuss the budget, right?
Right, right. Now we can discuss things related to the budget.
Related to the budget, okay. So I'd like to share with the committee, um, some research that I've done, uh, based on the, on the request from CPAC for funds. Um, it's a little bit long and I had to type it out, so I apologize. I'm going to have to read it to you, but I don't want to miss anything. And they said, I put a lot of work into this, so bear with me. So I've had, um, two phone calls now with a woman named Alicia Mallon, who is the Mass Association of School Committees Northeast Field Director, meaning she's responsible for the, about a quarter of the state, including North Andover. A little bit of background on her, she's a former CPAC board member in Westford. She has two children with IEPs and has also served on the Westford School Committee. So she has been, she's very experienced. Um, you know, she shared with me that MASC, that's Mass Association of School Committees, their directives around best practices are that allocations to CPAC be part of the special education budget and must be subject to district approval. They must be for specific purposes such as, for example, state MasPAC membership and speaker and educational programs. And this would be true whether such funding was via a specific dedicated line item or, or not. Either way, it would have to go through that process. Um, there are some districts, and I didn't ask her for a number and she didn't offer one, that do specifically fund a line item for MasPAC membership and potentially other programs. Um, she didn't elaborate any further and that is further research we, we could do if we feel the need. Um, she did talk with me, oh, oh, quite a long time, about school committee CPAC relationships. Uh, told me, and I'm quoting now, "It's unique and awkward by its nature." Um, "The district is supposed to provide support, but such support is not defined. It's unique in that it's legislatively mandated," right? There's a legislative mandate that school committees, or that's, or that districts have, well, it's not a mandate that you have a CPAC, but if you are going to have a CPAC, it's mandated that it take the form that it does. Um, uh, and this is because of that unique and, uh, what did I say? The unique and, um, sorry.
Mr. President, I think, um, the one thing that, because you know, um, that it is mandated that districts all have a CPAC.
Okay, it's, sorry. I misstated that.
I know you know that. It just came over on one.
Yes, yes. Sorry. It is mandated that we have a CPAC. I don't know what we would do if one didn't exist, but it is mandated that we have one, right? Um, uh, okay. So anyways, I already mentioned that they, that there are some that, that have a line item, some do not. She did not elaborate any further. We could do that research. She did however, talk about the relationship, its uniqueness and its awkwardness by nature. It is supposed to provide support, support's not defined. It's unique in that it's legislatively mandated. That's the important point. Sorry, thank you for the correction. And this is where best practices come from. Because what she spoke to me at length about was best practices. And that's, so I'm going to talk further about that. Um, she said that CPAC efforts are most successful, and this is based on her experience as well, when implemented collaboratively with the district. In this manner, the school district is the beneficiary of the volunteer hours and in cases where CPAC raises money independently, additional funds to implement effective and useful programs that go beyond obviously what the district could do on its own. Um, some raise money, some don't. Uh, they do recommend best practices for fundraising that, uh, that the CPAC should up, set up a separate 501(c)(3) charitable organization, a Friends of CPAC type of thing. Um, and then that can raise funds outside the district. And I have to say this now, this is the best of my knowledge. They then can direct, the CPAC could then direct the funds as they wish, subject of course to appropriate laws and regulations, um, for 501(c)(3)'s in general and for CPACs in particular to accept such donations. Okay. That's number one. Number two. Today, we, the school committee members, received an opinion from the school and, who is also the town council, uh, C-O-U-N-S-E-L, our attorney, uh, regarding concerns with, with, with us including specific line items in the school budget as that might potentially trigger something called an anti-aid amendment, Mass General Law, C dot 268A. Her recommendation was that the past practice of having CPAC request funding for a specific program and working with the district and the special education director be continued. Now, as we learned from the presentation made to us a week or two ago, the last two weeks, I think it's two meetings ago now, right? Um, no such request was made last year. Now, this is me now speaking as an individual member of the committee, right? Uh, as CPAC has made significant efforts to reorganize and structure itself to better achieve its mission. So now, again, speaking solely as an individual member of this board, after learning all this and putting considerable thought into it, this is where I am landing. I want to help CPAC perform its intended mission. I wanted, but I want to do it in the proper, legal and appropriate way. It would seem appropriate to me that we allow some time to see if this previous past practice I just described, where funds are requested for specific programs and they're, you know, requested from the district. I want to see if that, I, I, this is my opinion again, if, if that could be workable, right? So if specific programs are requested or if MasPAC membership reimbursement's requested, that that be requested and that we, we, you know, through our normal process approve. Um, I think we should get some history under our belt. If that doesn't seem to work, we can certainly do more research. We can figure out if the concerns raised by council are valid and if there's a way to address them. Um, we've heard previously in this room in our meetings that the funds are available to support what, uh, uh, you know, at least some funds are available to support these programs. And I know that it's not exactly what was requested of us. Um, you know, it's not an immediate yes, but it's also not a no. So that's where I am landing. And I, I just felt like that other members would benefit from hearing the, you know, the research that I, that I did. So, that's what I have.
If I may.
Please.
... on this. Um, I'm, I'm interested to know, because as, as was mentioned, um, with your conversations with...
Alicia.
Alyssa, Alicia?
Alicia.
Okay. Um, that there are some towns that do have a line item, but yet town council says there's, it could violate an anti-aiding. So I'm curious how that, um, how that, how that contradiction, um, would be rectified. Um, so I think more research into that absolutely needs to be done.
Yes.
To find out, to get to the bottom of how that goes about happening, especially under the statute where we're, as a committee, we are to assist our CPAC. Um, with that given being said, um, I do, we're here to advocate on behalf of our children. That's, that's our job, that's our duty. Um, and that's also what CPAC is doing, is advocating on behalf of our children. And I think we are on the same page and coincide with that. And, um, I think that's a wonderful initiative all around. I, I, I have seen their, the CPAC's presentation, the wonderful things that they want to do and I think that we should, we should support that. Um, given that there is some more background information, I would recommend that funding go through Ms. Barcusi, that, that we could maybe earmark, set aside funds that they are easily accessible for Ms. Barcusi's approval should CPAC come and request them. I, I would request that maybe we have almost like a, should any type of funding be denied, that CPAC has a relationship with the school committee liaison who could then maybe bring those concerns to the chair that we can be addressed at that time should we need additional funding that might be denied for, for the appropriate purposes for CPAC's mission and for our mission as we advocate for our children. So that would be my recommendation.
And if I, if I may, I, I should share that, that Alicia, or Ms. Mallon indicated that that's, that the exact process is what can happen, that, that if, if something's denied, there's always the option to come, you know, there's an escalation process superintendent. She shared this with me, I didn't put it in here, but she, you could go to the, if, if something is requested and denied and feel strongly that it shouldn't be denied, you can go to the superintendent and then ultimately come here to, for us to weigh in on it. So that's understood. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Um, I would say CPAC, uh, you know, the legislative initiative is under the committee. It's not under the superintendent. Um, so I think it would be within the process to be able to come to the school committee with those concerns as they're under, organized under the school committee.
It's true. Yeah. Okay.
I mean, the, the opinion of the town council came in at 3:53, so I was making dinner. I didn't know it was there. So I was just reading it now and I haven't had a chance to fully digest it. Um, so I, I have, I have questions about the opinion itself. Um, however, I do know that CPAC plays a vital role. Um, and I, I empathize with what all the, and truly empathize because I've, I've experienced it and lived it myself. The process of going through an IEP is hard and scary and frustrating. Um, I had to do it with my own child and the first time we met, it didn't, I went in having felt, feeling confident because I have sat in many an IEP for students, um, over the years and even when, in, when put in a different position that, um, I walked out feeling incompetent and foolish because I wasn't able to properly advocate for my kid. I didn't, I ended up not having the language or the ability to, the right words to ask the right questions to get what was important for him. Um, and to get there, we then had to spend a considerable amount of money to have a private neuro psych done so we could have the proper diagnosis so then we could get the appropriate accommodations, um, into his IEP that we knew six months earlier were the things that he needed. And that's, that's hard for a parent. And we at least had the wherewithal or the knowledge that we could request testing ourselves and we did so immediately when the teacher identified that he was having some struggles in reading. But if we hadn't done that, um, it would have been another year or it was in, it was in February, so it would have been any number of more days of testing and trying things and to get him what he needed. And I can't, I'm thankful that he, he got what he needed and the individual attention to be able to learn to read, because he's on grade level now. But if that didn't happen when it did, it wouldn't have. He has comorbidity with ADHD, C, both inattentive and hyperactive, and that just makes the whole learning process hard, right? So I understand, and I thought I was ready for it and I wasn't. And that's, I can't even imagine what parents who don't know the system at all experience that, and that scares me. So I want to do whatever it is that we can to make sure that parents go into those meetings feeling equipped, feeling powerful, feeling knowledgeable, so that they can ask the right questions and get what they need for their child, because, because we know our children the best. And sometimes the data that is revealed in a test doesn't really capture what that individual child needs. And to make it a truly team effort, which it is, the parent's input matters, and they deserve to have that, that training to be able to sit there as a, as an equal member at the table. And at times, it doesn't always feel like that. So mechanically, I don't know how to make it work. I, with this new letter, it confuses me a little bit in terms of what, what would be the appropriate use of funds. Looking at it though, I, I have some immediate questions, because it feels like that the art, the section that she, the town council points to is for maintaining or aiding any charitable or religious undertaking. And I'm not sure if that is quite the same, and if other districts are able to do this with a separate line item. And a mask, school committee people say we can do this with a separate line item, then I'm, I don't know. But Ms. Barcusi, do we have the ability to do the things and to fund the programs that they are advocating for?
So, I mean, we've had multiple conversations, so I'm going to continue to support the needs of the families. You know, I think the piece is, which I feel like I have to restate, because I think similarly as we have conversations, it starts to feel like we're not on the, we don't have the same goals, which is, I mean, I want, we all want parents to feel like they're equal members of team. So it isn't, it isn't an us against them situation. So what we need to do in order to fulfill, I mean, we can continue to gather information, the specific, and we had conversations of specific trainings. I would want, I want to ask the questions that I would expect people to ask me of trainings, since that's really, I think Meg brought up in terms of the perfect words, is it accessible and is equitable? So I want, I want the trainings that people are choosing. Again, I want the same questions to be asked that people would ask me. So that would be the only piece of it that, and thus far, there's been no, there's been no roadblocks in those conversations.
And I know that your, your interest is in making sure that kids are served well and working well with families and communities. I know that to be very much, very true. And I think, for me, the goal is to make sure that we do what's necessary to make that happen. We both, we all want that, but we might have to do something a little different to get there. I think, I don't always buy that, well, not every other CPAC is doing this argument, because part of me is like, who cares? Then we can be the ones who set the standard. And I have no problem being the ones leading out front. Sometimes that's a, that's a brave and bold and courageous thing to do for, on behalf of our kids. So, yeah, that's all I have to say right now. That was a lot.
I just want to clarify, because I know Joe had asked you if that, those funds would be available in your budget. Are they, or does it need to be?
Not my budget. Yeah, I mean, so I, so it's in the operating budget, yeah. So the, I don't make, and I've said this before, like, I don't make decisions in isolation around the operating budget. So what goes, you know, to say seven thousand or whatever dollars, you know, I don't make those decisions in isolation. But I, the, to meet the needs of what we're talking about, will continue to meet the needs. I am committed to continue to meet the needs. Is it, is it equal seven thousand whatever dollars? I don't know, you know, that we can talk about.
So I think one of the things that we probably need to consider is, our task tonight is to approve the budget.
Correct.
And that must be done according to town charter. I think we could kick it down the road until maybe Monday, but it doesn't really even buy us anything. So my ask tonight would be that we approve the budget as presented. I think at this point, there is not a policy in terms of how CPAC can request funds and what that process is, and I think we need to identify that. I think that we need to have better understanding of, we got the legal opinion at, I think it was three o'clock or something like that.
Yeah.
3:53.
Four o'clock for a seven o'clock meeting. So I think there's some questions and some clarifications that we need. Once the budget number is established, and I don't, I know you had it up before, Jim, I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized, sixty-five something, right?
Sixty-three, six.
Sixty-three, six, we'll call it. If there are appropriations that need to be moved at a later point, we do it all the time, and that can always be done. I do not think moving something without policies and procedures in place and understanding helps us in any way. And I don't think it helps CPAC, to be perfectly clear and honest. So my request would be that we approve the budget, and then we identify policies and procedures for this, get some additional clarification, and we can work with CPAC on that as well, and move forward. We also have four large unknown items that are looking at that $235,000 line item. And that is the special education review, the equity audit, which is ongoing right now. The special education review is nearing completion, security and emergency and safety of our school buildings, and extracurricular and stipend committees as well. So $235,000 seems like a lot for those four items. I want to be fair, there, there may be things that are in there that we are legally responsible and bound to do. And I think we approve the budget as it is today, develop those policies and procedures, and then if we need to move money at a later point, we certainly can.
Okay, yep.
I would just like to, I don't disagree, I think the budget number, that, that's where we're at. I don't, I don't think that, that changing that is at issue. And I don't disagree with putting policies in place and regulations on how we work with CPAC in the future. I just want to make sure that we are prepared to meet their needs as required to assist them by statute in the meantime, until we get those set into place.
All right. So, go ahead. I was gonna, I was gonna, well, I wanted to clarify something. It is very clear, as Mr. McDevitt stated, that if we approve a number tonight, as long as that bottom line number doesn't change, right, we have the authority to move money around within that, correct, Dr. Millie, right? We can always reallocate, shift things around. So it, by itself, approving the budget tonight doesn't mean that's zero dollars for CPAC is what I'm getting at. It does not mean that.
Right, we have a responsibility to anticipate as best as possible how the money's going to be spent and what line items. But every school district in the state and probably in the country requires the ability to move money after the budget has been established, because things change. So it's perfectly reasonable approach to, because as Alyssa was saying, the bottom line number is not being impacted.
Right.
And that's what the school, the town manager and the select board needs, is the bottom line number. And then we have the ability to make changes. But like I said, I just wanted to be clear to people that our responsibility is to project as best as we can how that money is being spent.
Sure. Okay. Any further comment? No? Or about, about the budget in general?
I have comments about the budget in general, but I can wait on that until everyone has their opportunity to speak on this.
Yeah, so I'm just, so I guess the right procedure would be, is that anybody else wants to speak to the CPAC issue specifically? And if not, then let's start discussing the notion on the table, right, which is to approve the budget as presented.
I thank you, Dr. Gilligan, and to the rest of your team for pushing and advocating for five and a half percent. I know that wasn't necessarily, that's what we wanted, and then there was a chance that wouldn't be there, and you got us to that point. I really do deeply appreciate that. And we know that bulk of that money that is included there is for making sure we can meet our obligations to our teachers' contract and our other contracts. So I deeply appreciate it. It's a third year in a row, we've gone up by a significant amount. And we should be realistic, and we should state openly that five and a half percent is just about getting us level services. And that's, it's good that we have level services, and I'm really excited for that. And it's, it points to, we don't have enough money in our town to really do all the things we need to do. If we have to spend that much more to hold on to what we have right now, and that makes me, that makes me a little sad. Last summer, we talked about looking at some things in the budget and wanting to see if we can make some changes. And I know this year that is impossible. But I want to make sure we keep in our mind as we go into the summer, planning into next year, that we continue to think about athletic fees and whether or not we continue, need to continue to charge for those. That's about $300,000 a year, I think, that we bring in. So is there a way that we can, next year and next year or two, think about that? Is there a way we can think about transportation fees and making sure that all of our kids within two miles are have, don't necessarily have to pay for the transportation between the half mile and the two miles? I think that we have two, a couple instances where kids have to, they live on busy roads, and to get to the safe sidewalk, it's not easy. And I want to make sure that our, we can get to school safely and without having to pay money for that. And I also want us to start thinking about what comes next, especially for our arts and music program. Just like I would, I would like to know sooner, rather than years from now, but like, what would it mean to expand our music offerings? Do, like, what would it cost to bring instrument lessons in school down to the fourth or fifth grade level, so we don't have to wait till they're in sixth grade? And by the way, the sixth graders did great last week at their concert, but after four months of taking lessons, but imagine how wonderful and strong our program would be if they had that, the extra year or two of instrument. And there was 21 kids in my daughter's saxophone class. That's a lot of kids who are itching to play an instrument. I would love to give them that opportunity sooner. And these are all aspirational, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention them as we talk about budget and have them get lost in the shuffle of all the other things that we do. But I'm excited to be able to appropriate this amount of money tonight.
I can assure you, that is exactly the internal conversation that we had, that we are working towards, having that public conversation with the school committee about those items, especially the fees. But it just wasn't the year to do that, right? But it's still on the front burner.
Any other general discussion? I want to add one little thing to that, is I have, I have this dream of late buses and athletic buses. Maybe I'm reminiscing a little bit here, but I really think that that's another thing we should see if we can somehow accommodate, right? So that students that don't, that have transportation struggles have a way to participate in those programs and still get home. Any, any further discussion? If not, we can, we can vote on the budget as presented. So we're entertaining now the motion made and seconded to approve the budget of $63,684,174 for fiscal year '25. Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Conig?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the budget's approved. The next item is second read and vote on the calendars. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
So I'll move to approve the school calendar 2020-25, which is the, I'm not sure how to term this here, but I'm going to call it the pre-Labor Day start. So school would start, first day of school would be August 28th. So I don't, I don't know, they're not numbered or anything like that, but.
They're labeled the pre-Labor Day start and post-Labor Day.
Where's that labeled, sorry?
In the.
And the cover sheet.
Oh, they're just not on this, though.
Yeah, and just on the cover sheet.
Yeah, well.
A second?
I shoveled them quick, I don't know if you can find it. So, August 28th, August 28th would be the first day.
That certainly makes it clear, yeah. Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
I would recommend, Dr. Millie, could you scroll down just a little bit to December? Thank you. That December 20th, which is a Friday, be a full day of school. It's a half day. I think that that's a very challenging thing for families. We have seven straight school days that are out because of the holidays. I think we finish the week as a solid week. We're not, you know, right before some of those holidays. We've got Saturday, Sunday, Monday before some of those start. So I would recommend the 20th be a full day, not a half day. Sorry for my voice.
Is that part of the motion you're making, or is that just a recommendation?
The motion was for the 28th, and now I'm, we're having conversation. So, conversation point would be for the 20th to be a full day.
So just for those following along at home or in the audience, the 28th start is pre-Labor Day, and that means students would come in on Wednesday and Thursday, and there was, then there would still be a four-day recess. So it'd be Friday off, Saturday, Sunday, Labor Day, and then grades one through 12 would return on Tuesday. All right, any, any other discussion on the calendar?
I would just say, I would agree with Mr. McDevitt. I believe for a lot of parents, finding childcare for a half day, a lot of parents, you know, are working parents, it's a very difficult task to do, especially when they're coming upon, you know, two weeks and a lot of that still having to find supplemental childcare. I would agree with making that a full day.
Okay. I'm just pointing a procedure, maybe someone can help me, but this is just a discussion point?
This is just conversation, I haven't, I mean.
It's not part of your motion.
I can make it part of the motion, but I, you know, if there was hardcore, you know, absolutely not, the 20th should be a half day, I might not make that motion, but we're just having conversation.
Okay.
Do we have some rationale on the 20th and the half day versus the full day for curriculum purposes? What do you mean by that? Well, what's best practice for our students for curriculum purposes on the 20th? If we're not, if we're not looking, if we're looking at it from an academic standpoint, benefits, advantages, disadvantages?
I would just.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
I'll give Pam a second to gather her thoughts. You know, from the standpoint of time and learning and meeting all the requirements, it could be either. Council's a full day, we still have enough hours and time for the requirements. And so, you know, we've done it, you know, more recently, we've had the half day, because it's, where, it depends on where it falls on the calendar, just like Labor Day, right? Looking at the pros and the cons, so we could do either. And Pam, if you've had any thoughts that you've gathered now?
Academically, you know, the full day gives you an opportunity if the classroom teacher or, you know, course teacher wanted to plan something realistically. You know, traditionally in the elementary school setting, the half day is used for a school party or a school assembly. But, you know, academically, the full day does give you the opportunity if you so plan for it.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that I hear a lot, and I, I tend to forget this, because my kids are in high school now, but for elementary kids, and I assume middle school as well, kind of coming home and not necessarily having a parent home or being able to get home for those children with all of the, excuse me, the professional development days, which are typically Wednesdays. I never really hear very much about the calendar. I think people are a little bit used to Labor Day now. I'm not always the biggest fan, but I hear more now about those early release Wednesdays being very challenging for families. And so if it's one more day where we don't have an early release, I think that it helps.
Okay. I kind of feel the same way as you do. My kids are grown up, but I know, to know those early release days were always difficult and challenging, so I'm on the same page.
So I would modify my amendment to.
The motion?
Motion to.
It could be a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I'm personally, I'm a fan of the 20th being a half day. I haven't been in a school with kids who are itching to get out, those, it's hard in the morning, it's, you're impossible, I think, in the afternoon to make sure it stays productive. And I also, I understand the struggle for parents to make sure that, that there's some continuity. So I'm torn, I'm not so married to the idea of a half day there that I wouldn't, that I would, like, I'm, I'm okay. I understand why, so.
I will just, I don't want to muddy the waters for you guys, but I do want to also let you know that Rick Alant would still, on a, on a half day, still run community programs after kids stop.
But they don't go until the same time all the other, all the other kids stop, goes to.
No, but it would go to, you know, the end of the traditional school day.
So, oh, a friendly amendment myself, I guess here, that we would start school on the 28th and that December 20th would be a full day.
And, well, I guess parliamentally. I think, yeah, we need a second for the amendment, or the amended version. Okay, thank you. All right, so is there any further discussion? If not, let's have a vote. Ms. Petrowski? Motion is, sorry, to be clear, the motion is the pre-Labor Day start, December 20th is a full day.
I'm kind of torn as well, to be honest. The educator and me.
My kids will hate me too.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's a tough day to keep students engaged. And so academically, that's challenging, but I recognize the challenge for families as well, so I vote yes.
Thank you. Ms. Conig?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
That's not a surprise. Mr. Hicks?
I'll vote yes.
And the chair votes yes, so there is, that motion passes.
Dr. Gilligan, while the calendar's up there, could we, just to request that we not have a half, a professional development day on the 18th?
Yeah, we look at that very closely, and we'll, we'll put those days in and get.
I know you guys will put those in afterwards, but I think.
Yep.
If we're going to have a full week, let's have a full week.
Oh, the PD on.
She said two days earlier, yeah.
Not have that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one hour.
All right.
Ms. Lethem's taking notes on that.
Okay. All right, next item, we have new business informational presentation on our budget status for 24. I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Millie, and tonight he's really just going to talk about some of the pressure points with these.
Yep, thank you.
Right, so not a lot has changed since the last budget status report, but I did tell you at that last one that I would put numbers to the items that we have for our pressure points, and so that's what I've done. You recall the OSD allowed a 14% increase. Somebody recently did a comparison of the percentage increases, and they averaged around 1.75 to 2 per year, and this one was 14. The impact of that and some increased number of placements has a 736,000 over what we had last year. had last year. Plus, double hit on that was the reduction in circuit breaker reimbursement of $102,000. Now, what's going to happen, the, well, I'll say, I'll wait till the end on that one.
Just a quick question. Would that be a negative 102?
Well, it's the same, if you add them up.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a loss of $102,000. ESSR funds, similarly, we were holding back, if you recall our budget presentation last year, $200,000 of the ESSR money to be available for this year to offset anything, and we ended up having to use it at the end of the year to cover our expenses. And the higher salaries that were mentioned earlier from the negotiations, we had budgeted two and a half percent, but the teachers came in at 3%, so that's a half a percent. Plus, the increased column changes continue to go up, so that totals $235,000, and then maintenance costs of $191. Now, there are some offsets that will occur. Our utilities bills are lower than they, we budgeted, so that'll probably offset the maintenance costs. The state didn't do anything to begin the year as far as helping us with that OSD increase, but they are doing something now. Marcy and I went to a training, they have a program called extraordinary relief, which allows you, if you are a certain percentage over the previous year's expenses, to get money, higher reimbursement the following year, but they're also putting in a relief program so that we can get funds this year as well. And we certainly qualify, we're well over the threshold that was required, it's just going to be a matter of.
Well, we're not sure that we qualify yet.
We, well.
It looks like it.
Yeah, well, I'm really confident that we do, based on the percentages, but what we have to do is we have to enter all eligible expenses, and then we'll see where it puts us. And we've also been in conversations with the town manager, they're kind of in the same boat, especially with snow and ice, pretty big ticket item this year, and will continue to be, but we've talked to Melissa Rodriguez and also Lynn Savage, and we'll get together and figure out how to bring it on home for the end of the year.
A question, a question, Jim, the, so this is a running, this is a snapshot, right, of where we are at this point in time, this part of the year, right? So does any, so for example, the $736,000 for the OSD 14%, is that number going to get bigger by the end of the year, or is that number done?
No, the numbers that we're giving you are what we project for the year.
Okay. So these are projections, they're not at this moment? They're projected end-of-year numbers?
Right. They, the outer district at this point in the year wouldn't change much anyway.
Not much.
It's already paid, basically.
The students are already placed, and, you know, tuition's already set, so.
If it's, it is offsets usually, so it will stay.
Okay.
It'll be minor changes.
Well, you get where I'm going with that, right? Like, the idea if this was a snapshot and it could get 25% worse than this, then that's.
Right, exactly, and so what we have presented is what we project for the year.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I will say, like, I mean, I will put one caveat in there, unusual things happen. For instance, if a student moves in at a cost of $200,000, we absorb the cost of $200,000. So stranger things have occurred in terms of tuition costs for the year.
Right, it's very rare, though, at this point in the year, that that would fall on us until the following year.
April 1st is the cutoff date, so anytime now, between now and April 1st.
It could, no, I guess I understand, one time, one time things can happen, but.
We've had also kids move out.
Yeah, the same thing, we still have those costs because it's.
Sure, but you understand where I was going, I wanted to make sure this is not, this is, this is the end-of-year projection, at least as best as you know now, not, not, hey, we're three quarters of the way through the year, and there's another quarter of bad, for lack of a better word, bad news coming. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just super quick for context, Dr. Millie does this on a monthly basis, which is great and fantastic because of exactly that scenario a number of years ago, where I think we got to, like, May or something like that, and a couple of things happened, and we were like, oh my God, we're really kind of over. And so this is really kind of letting us figure out right now. I mean, if you add that up, we're 1.4. That's a pretty significant budget deficit that we have right now.
Yeah, and, I mean, we, obviously, the first number's the biggest number, and we went into this, this year's budget knowing that, kind of hoping against hope, I guess, that the state would do something to help us deal with it, and in a way they are, we just don't know what the extent of that will be. But yeah, that was going to always be the problem. And we did, that our FY25 budget captures those expenses and gets us to, as long as, like Marcy was saying, we don't get move-ins that we didn't anticipate, but that was the purpose of the Special Education Stabilization Fund, which the town manager would prefer to use the finance reserve fund for, which, either way, it's fine with us, but there's something in place for that.
For the $736.
Well, not for that much, but in a regular year, right, and their percentage increase isn't going to be that this coming year.
We hope.
Yeah, I know, we definitely hope.
Yeah.
So then what, what do we do about the number being over? What's the?
Yeah, and that will be the next.
What's the solution here?
Yeah, well, that'll be the next presentation, will, Dr. Gilligan and I will have had a chance to spend some time with Melissa and Lynn, and we'll have the answer.
That's why we meet every week with the town manager. You know, these are certainly the pressure points, but, you know, we're looking at that state relief, we're looking at the typical support for special education overages, and we work closely with her, so.
And this is not going to be a surprise to her, right? I mean, you guys have been keeping them updated.
We meet weekly.
Yeah.
She's watching, I'm sure.
Yeah. All right. All right, is there any other, any other questions regarding the budget status update for '24? Okay, hearing none, we're on to our final item, which is, we're open for public comment again, if anyone would like to come up and speak.
You know how I feel about this microphone. Rachel Anastasia, 46 Thorndike Road, speaking as a private citizen. To be honest, you have made this harder than it needs to be. It feels as though you are kicking the can down the road, and I speak as a private citizen, two sons, but also as a member of CPAC. By not taking a stand, a powerful step forward, it feels like you are possibly hiding behind the failure of possibly the Department of Education to provide established guidelines, and it feels archaic and lacks foresight. You will look for policies and procedures, procedures and further guidance. Trust me, other people have looked. It's not there. Dave has done an enormous amount of research and contacted the right people. It is limited guidelines out there, but as what Joe had said, step forward, be better than what has previously been established. In the meantime, I myself, as a private citizen, I am confident that CPAC will move forward. They will provide what they feel is best for the parents in this community, and they'll figure it out. What you need to decide is whether or not you want that to be hand-in-hand with you as the school committee. It's very clear now, maybe, why the relationship between CPAC and school committee might be labeled awkward. That's not at all what I think the members of CPAC want, but maybe that's why it feels that way. Thanks.
Okay.
Sasha Weinrich, 21 Sawyer Road. While I appreciate very much the discussion had among school committee members tonight, I am a bit taken aback by the mention that Town Council was asked to give a legal opinion regarding line item funding for CPAC. I have had extensive conversations with school committee members and with admin, some as late as today, and I was never, it was never part of our discussion that a legal opinion was being requested, or that we could expect to review one, or the school committee was expecting to review one. Regardless of the opinion's validity, this is an example of the district appearing, and I use that word specifically, appearing to work in opposition to, not in concert with CPAC, regardless of intent. I implore you to consider the imbalance of power in this relationship, similar to that imbalance of power parents feel at the IEP team table meeting, and again, commit to working in good faith with us in both words and actions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Okay. It's time for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion? All right, then we'll vote, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Conig?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's 8:41 PM. Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.
Motion.